Mr. Atwood.
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to approve the February 21st, 2023 agenda with the removal of C2 for the consent agenda for further discussion.
Okay, motion's been made to approve the agenda with the removal of C2.
I'll support it.
And motion's been supported by Commissioner Katan. All those in favor?
Aye.
opposed?
No.
The vote is carried. C3, C2. Okay, then minutes.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of the regular meeting held February 6th, 2023 as presented.
Support. Okay, motion was made by Commissioner Katan and supported by Commissioner Swindell that approved the minutes. Further discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Vote. That motion is carried. Okay, we'll go right into public comments and the first person on our agenda is Commissioner Brad Hingado.
Greetings from the county. Please forgive my casual dress tonight as a white offer unity of Michigan State and this is the only white Michigan State shirt I have. Two big topics that we have, it seems like every day, my day is being consumed with broadband and internet throughout the county. I'm excited to say that the Michigan High Speed Internet Office is hosting a regional broadband listening session is what they're calling it. It's going to be Tuesday, March 7th from 4:00 to 6:00 p.m. at LaPierre Country Club. This is to learn and give feedback to Michigan's long-term broadband goals and infrastructure. And then the other thing is, two weeks ago at our regular board meeting, we did approve to add two more sheriff's officers to the courthouse. So we'll have four total, one sergeant, three deputies. They're currently doing dry runs of the security at the courthouse with a planned lag date of security at the courthouse of March 6th, which of course is what the voters approved when they passed along. Other than that, it's been pretty quiet at the county.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, and then I have a public comment to read and then we'll go, I'll get to the everybody in the audience. Okay, this is from Patrick Hines, is that how you say it? From Woodchips? Patrick from Woodchips. Commissioner Atwood told me I could email you some public comment that would be read tonight as I cannot pretend in person. These comments relate to Bike Night, which is on the consent agenda. Call me with any questions on the list. This phone. Public comments for consent agenda Bike Night. He's the owner of Woodchips BBQ and Cookies and Cream. Hello, commissioners. I write to you today to please consider further discussion on the Friday night, Friday Bike Nights before approving the consent agenda. I love bikers. My dad owned a motorcycle when I was growing up. I currently own a three-wheeler. My restaurant partners have owned bikes. The culture around bikers is unique, passionate, and fun. I am very supportive of a Bike Night, just not on Fridays. My main goal as opening my restaurant nine years ago was to help this downtown realize its full potential and regain its former glory. We have a beautiful, walkable, historic, and growing downtown that should be a destination for surrounding communities for miles around. In general, we get two days per week during the summer to invite folks in and give them a chance to fall in love with Pierre. Those days are Friday and Saturday. When Bike Night began two years ago, we were supportive and optimistic, so much so that we were one of the main sponsors proving, not providing not just dollars to fund the event, but also outdoor food vending, additional social district service, and extra staffing to help make the night successful events. Two years later, we now have the data to know that while a few businesses may have benefited, most did not, with many far worse during the Bike Nights, especially on nights where attendance dwindled. Doubley Bike Night moves are no closer to having more retail business options open later, something that will prove a crucial tipping point in our town's development. Finally, it is my understanding that after endorsing slash sponsoring it previously, that the DDA is no longer. And we just said that, the DDA is no longer. All I am asking is for there to be a conversation and discussion. We are confident we can find solutions that will work for all and not just a few, and that's something I hope we can all support. I humbly request that the commission please engage in discussion and table approval of any Friday night summer events until at least your next meeting, when other solutions and options can be explored and bring the whole downtown community together. Thank you for your time and consideration, Patrick. Okay, listen.
I'd like to just open in here.
Thank you.
Dear Father, we invite you Holy Spirit here. Thank you, Lord, for all that you have done for our town. Thank you that you care about each individual in this town, in this county, in this state, in this country, in this world. We're so very grateful to have you caring for us. We pray that you would protect this city, put a hedge of protection around our community. Lord, we know that you've caused all things to work for the good of those who love you. We thank you that your will will happen and that what humans do. You are in charge. Thank you for your goodness. Thank you for your plan. Thank you that you've already gone ahead of those that make plans, that you work all things out. Thank you that we can trust you, that you are a good, good father. Lord, I pray that you be with these people that protect our city, that you keep them safe. Thank you that you continue to give them courage to run into danger, protect them and their families. Lord, I pray for those who are in management of this city, that you would guide their hearts, their minds, their motives, that they would really research and want to bring good to our city. Lord, and I, I'm defining good by things that are your love. Thank you for tonight. Thank you for all that are in attendance, for their interest and concern of our town. Thank you for those who are serving us day in and day out. Be with us, Lord, through the rest of this meeting. Pray that you would guide it, that people would be transparent and honest and trustworthy, open and flexible. Thank you again, Lord, for your goodness. I pray all these things in the precious son Jesus Christ.
Anybody else who'd like to make public comment at this time? Okay, we'll move on then. C2, discussion.
Well, we should do the consent agenda.
Oh, that's true.
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Support. Motion's been made to support the consent agenda. Commissioner Katan. Support of Commissioner Patterson. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried. Through the rest of the cell agenda, so now back to C2.
Make a motion to approve the special event application Friday night bikes due 2nd through September 8th, 2023. Support.
Motion was made by Commissioner Katan and supported by Commissioner Stroh to support the Friday night Bike Nights. Is there a discussion? Commissioner Patterson.
The reason I voted no, typically on the consent agenda items are park pavilions, et cetera. We've worked on first come, first served. The applicants for Bike Night have submitted a valid application that has been approved by our police chief. Everything is on hold and I see no reason that we should let somebody delay that application.
Mr. Stroh.
I agree. That was, oh wait, it was submitted at the time that it was, that it should be, it's been gone through the checks and balances. Support it.
Any other comments? Commissioner Atwood?
Well, the reason why I wanted to have it pulled so we could have some further discussion because I do know last year there was opposition to Friday night Bike Nights. So they didn't have an opportunity to speak up some local business owners. So I was just hoping for some discussion or possibly some solutions to the situation because I know the DDA is not, I don't want to say it's not backing this, but it's not a DDA event. And I do understand that, that the street's not going to, that Nepacine's not going to be blocked off. It's not really for sure thing if it will be blocked off or not be blocked off, which requires assistance from DPW. Also, police presence would result in overtime. So if this is a, if this is a private event for a private business, who covers the city's cost for putting on a for-profit event? If, if, you know, if they do get DJ bands, et cetera, who covers the cost of the, the street closed? I understand that volunteers can put up the barricades and stuff, but like the police overtime? It's kind of my question. I'm not sure how that works.
But I believe that just like any other city that has gone, taxpayers would pay for the additional police presence, just like they would for any other business.
Are most of our events nonprofits or?
Do you have any other comment on that?
Well, my comment on that would be, I don't know if this is a city's co-sponsored event, that's how we get involved and how we sponsored it in the past. If this is not a city co-sponsored event, then those issues were, I didn't read the permits, so I'm not sure if it is or not.
So I think it, I think you, the applicant did check the, was it Co-City event? But I wasn't sure how that, how that worked because if the DDA isn't, again, I don't want to use the word back, not backing it. Yeah, it says city-operated event, but how is it a city-operated event when it's for for-profit business? Again, I'm not trying to stir trouble or anything or get anyone.
Just moments of clarification as we have some of the DDA board members that are also in our audience this evening and one, another one as well. The DDA was advised through an consulting firm that we needed to reduce the number of events that we were supporting. It's not that the DDA is not backing or supporting this event. We are not administratively supporting this event. And should it be known that this is actually one of the few events that the DDA did produce last year that actually showed a profit. Everything else was a negative. They were actually advised to cut two events from their calendar. One was being considered as the Concert in the Park Series as well as Bike Night. We decided that we would keep all other events with the exception of Bike Night because it actually ended up being 12 events, not just one.
Because it's every Friday?
Mm-hmm. So it's not that the DDA is not supporting or backing, we are not administratively supporting or backing this event. It's a difference.
Right, and I'm just speaking up on behalf of businesses downtown that they have the Nepacine closed Mondays and Fridays. And they have come to us in the past and stated that the streets are closed too much. But again, I'm not against, I'm not against bikers or Bike Night. But is there a solution that we're not seeing or, you know, that's just my point of view?
I checked the application and it does say that the part of the street will be, need to be combed off and it does say city-operated event. So we're, according to this, we are co-sponsored.
Okay, so we are co-sponsored. So that means that police overtime would be covered just like any other event. Commissioner Atwood? I mean.
Thank you. So Bike Night, this would be our third year. Year one was an experiment. Year one, the event organizers, I don't want to speak disparagingly against folks, but we'll just say I'm glad they were gone for year two. Year two, the DDA took over Bike Night and there was a wee bit of like a competition between biker events on Friday evenings in the tri-county area. But it was, still has success as Mr. Stroh has said, it turned out into the black. I will say this, I want to see downtown full of people and families having a good time. I love seeing every restaurant on that block full of people having a good time. I love the feedback that we get between all of these people and our police saying, this is great, everybody's good. There was one who could have been incident the first year of Bike Night, which our police officers were right on top and basically treated two bike clubs like they were in kindergarten and said, you go over that side of the classroom and you go over that side of the classroom. And there was no problem whatsoever. I see blend full, all the kids are not coming. I, I was stationed at Vinyl while I was volunteering. My daughter and six friends went to blend during Bike Night. The bikers are not keeping customers away from the other small businesses. I, I feel like maybe some are like, this isn't the kind of clientele I want. But it's going to grow. It's, it's, it is growing. I mean, given the fact, from my point of view to share with you all, I was downtown 13 out of 16 Bike Nights volunteering, taking out trash, putting up barricades to make sure everybody had everything all right. Okay, and I was happy to do it and I will happily do it again because it drives people into this town. I've lost track of bikers who have expressed to me, hey, I came back to that restaurant on Tuesday and had dinner with my family. They don't just come in on Friday and never come back. They're now experiencing this community and this community is now on their radar to return the other six days of the week. It is good, having a large group of people having a good time in our town is good.
Mr. Stroh?
Two years ago, when we were approving this event and we were really in the form of, the formation of what would this event look like, we were also advised by that point by our chief of police, Chief Frisch, who also was in the support of this event. And we knew going in, and I even remember making the comment in that meeting, that if we were to go down this road, we are, we should not consider this to be a one and done or a stop-start type of event, that if it's going to be a consistent event that grows, it is going to need consistency. We're in year two, we're now going into year three. There was an opportunity last year when we were approving this event for the public to comment on whether or not they wanted to participate or not. And I do remember specifically that Patrick Ince was sitting right here in front of me on that meeting and said absolutely nothing. Now, I'm totally fine. I love Patrick. He does an amazing job with working within the community, as do many of our other restaurants. I'm concerned that we are getting a little bit, almost discriminatory about the type of people that we're wanting or allowing into, into our community. And for that matter, if you were to poll many of the businesses in the downtown Nepacine District, the same conversation could probably be happening for LaPierre Days. Many businesses actually close for the entire week. They lose business, but somehow we just continue to rubber stamp that one. It's a, it's heritage, it's tradition, I totally get it. But if you really want to analyze event to event, let's, let's level the playing field. LaPierre Days doesn't do a great job for us either. It might bring a ton of people, but what does it really do?
Commissioner Atwood?
Well, one thing he did mention was consistency. In year one, we had a, an event that was put on by an organization, then it was the DDA, and now it's a, a private event. So there's a little bit of inconsistency there. And again, it's not discriminatory. Every event has pros and cons. And this is a newer event, so there's going to be, you know, there's going to be pros, there's going to be people who love it, there's going to be people who don't love it. And it's perfectly fine to, to discuss it. And that was the only reason why I wanted to pull from the consent, to discuss it. The pros, the cons, not attacking bikers, not attacking business owners. There, I, I'm a firm believer that there's a solution for every problem. It's, it's just, are we looking for a solution? Or are we just, you know, not willing to discuss these things? Even though there's other business owners downtown that want to discuss it, they come up with a different solution.
So this, let's say the pro Bike Night versus the not pro Bike Night. The folks who were against Bike Night last year voiced their opinion, not here in this city, but more privately. So it, it's been 10 months and here we are right now. We have, hey, do we want to approve Bike Night again? Or, hey, we got nothing? And it's been 10 months. So at the, hey, we need time for a discussion. It's been 10 months. So what's the alternative plan? We have nothing. It's been 10 months.
Mr. Patterson?
We have a situation with a private business that has filled out the application, gone through the screening, and applied versus a private business that might do something. They're both private businesses. Neither has DDA stamp of approval, except one has gone through the process. And I call for any questions.
Okay, questions are called. Would you vote? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried. It will be Bike Night on Friday night from June 2nd to September 8th. Okay. Thank you. The bill listing?
I'll, I'll take it. Just voices. I'll go ahead and approve the bill listing as presented for $1,626,171.21. Support.
Motion was made by Commissioner Katan and supported by Commissioner Stroh. Is there any discussion on the bills? Hearing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion is carried. Okay. In your pocket, there was a proclamation for Darrell Oliver, who will be retiring March 3rd. He is not here this evening and wasn't able to make it. And I would like a motion to approve the proclamation. Commissioner Patterson?
I make a motion to adopt the proclamation for Darrell Oliver, building official, his prepared. Support.
Okay, motion was made by Commissioner Patterson and supported by Commissioner Stroh. Is there any discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried. Congratulations, Darrell. Maybe a lot. That brings us down to the administrative reports for the 2023 application for the fireworks.
I'll make a motion to approve the 2023 application for fireworks and the 2023 permit for fireworks submitted by Ace Pyro and authorize the mayor and city manager to sign all necessary documentation.
Support. Again, motion was made by Commissioner Katan and supported by Commissioner Swindell. Is there any discussion? Hearing none?
Yeah, just a question. On the contract signed by the chamber, it's through the 25th with set dates and then two other dates. We will still have to give them annual approval?
Yes.
Just making sure.
Just a quick comment from the conversation I have with the chair because a lot of folks in recent years were thrown off because our fireworks display is not on the 4th of July right now and it's not going to be on the 4th of July for this year or a couple of years coming. The hope is for four to five years, we'll be back closer to July 4th as usual because the supplier of fireworks or the fireworks company that we, they had used forever and ever went out of business to tell them. Very sweet, but that's it.
Any other discussion? Okay. All those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Both? Hearing none? Motion's carried. Brings us to the discussion on the city manager search. We did receive today, should have received today through your email, information from James Freed from the pivotal group. And I believe he submitted 12 applications, 11 or 12 for us to review. So number one, we need to set up time to meet James for our workshop, which is probably about an hour. And then we need to decide on a date to actually interview the candidates for this manager's position. I don't know what your availability is for this week. I ask you if you can read your calendars.
I would like to see the workshop happen this week so we have an opportunity, maybe that James has the opportunity that we can look at, maybe do interviews on March 4th, Saturday, March 4th. Because our 11th is already taken up with the attorney situation unless we, plus I think if we do the interviews, the actual physical interviews with the candidates on the floor, that gets us, I think the best odds of having somebody here prior to Dale's retirement. Not to say it's a guarantee, but it betters our chances.
Okay, who's available on Thursday night? Not I. Or you? Nope. Saturday morning. Can we do it like early in the morning?
I can nick it up, but you just tell me. Oh, that's, oh, that's the way for forgiveness. Saturday again?
I do. I can do whatever. Did James do?
The conversation I had with him last week was he opened it pretty much anytime. There was one day in there and I think that was Monday, the 27th, that he wasn't able to do it.
So should we possibly pick two days and give James an out? A preference gave in a fall?
Yeah, it doesn't hurt. It doesn't hurt.
I'll, I'll make myself available for any day.
Okay.
Just for clarification, for people to follow on, this is for the commission to discuss with James, the possible candidates.
Yes, yes. And give us the rundown. We'll work on it. Yeah. Instead of outing out.
Yeah.
That depends on our questions, I suppose. That depends on our questions, I suppose.
Saturday morning, all right, for everybody? 10 o'clock? I like to talk about that.
Does 10 sound like a good time? I'll check. You know, they're locked in the morning?
No, for that morning.
Are you talking about this Saturday for the 10 a.m.?
Yes.
Okay. I just wanted to clarify the date, thank you.
Yes, this Saturday. But then if we were going to have a second date, Thursday's out. Tomorrow night's a little too soon, probably. 28th, that's Tuesday. It could be Monday or Tuesday, but I kind of think that Monday's out. James?
I got some DDA on it.
Yeah.
So Tuesday would be the backup day.
So how about 10 o'clock on Saturday on the 25th? Or 5:30 or 5?
Sure.
What's your preference for?
5:30, 5:30, please. That's where you?
And then we should set a date so that they can get going on a time. Candidates. I'd be able to be.
I think it's enough time. I mean, really theoretically, it could be enough time. I mean, if if we if we get with if we get with pedal on Saturday, then they can get rock and roll and reaching out to people actually probably that day if they want to. I would imagine they have that ability. So, you know, it's a seven-day lead time.
So I'll ask James for March 4th.
I would take it for the 4th. Absolutely.
Yeah. If that, also if we work out, if there's not enough time, then I guess we have to push that down to the
We'd have to go.
17.
Or we're going to do double duty on the 11th.
How many ways?
Yeah.
They're quicker during the night. I'd like to pause on that one.
Yeah.
Oh, you mean during the week?
But again, James made the comment that weekends might work better.
Yes.
Because of employment situation.
Right.
Yeah. I mean, and I did have a personal conversation with him recently where he, when I said, boy, I'd like to, if we can get the interviews done on the 4th, just for the paid better odds to say we have somebody here in Florida. He's he's for that.
He appeared to be.
Yeah. When I spoke to him, I was like, I'm looking at the board, what are you putting? He's like, yeah, absolutely. For the 4th.
So if we have to, the
Yeah.
Okay. That's what I got there.
You got one?
Yes. So, so those are the dates. And we're going to hold him and, uh, for right away, find out what's going on, what we can do, and I'll let everybody know. We also talked about, I guess you talked about a couple of weeks ago, that chance that we may need an interim. I think we might be okay. But if we're not by the end of the month, depending more on who we are going to hire and where they're coming from, if they have to give them a notice or whatever, what are our steps that we would have to take to make a motion for the interim? Or to officially request Kelly?
There are
For that week or two? What steps? So I'm going to make sure that we do that.
There are no steps that you would need to take. The hierarchy, the flow chart is in place. Kelly would be the vote to person to fill in when I'm not here. We rotated it back and forth between the chief and the finance director. So there'd be nothing that needed to be done. She would assume that position until Kelly was the person.
Now, hopefully, this will not be the scenario. Yeah, she would say that. But what if something happens and it's a month of is the procedure any different then? I mean, that we might have to talk about at that point on whether Kelly or Jeremy or whatever would be able to step in.
Again, they would be operating in the position, and there should be no need to apply to place someone in that position. The interim is usually appointed by the city manager. And in the lack of a city manager, you go to the flow chart, which indicates the finance director. So, yeah, she would fill in. And, you know, she might have to work an extra two minutes a day. I know she can handle it.
I just wanted to make sure that we've covered it all bases, if not, we don't have to wait two weeks to make something happen. Very good. Glad to hear that. Is there any other discussion from the commission? We gotta do any of that.
I I'm just, you know, I, you know, you know, stay, like we said when this all began, hey, we know we kind of have to, we want to move with some efficiency, with some speed, but we don't want to mess up on this either. So, you know, throttle back, throttle forward, you know, we'll call it as it is, it's hyper aggressive. You know, if we feel that, hey, we're we're going to put ourselves in a situation where we're hindering Kelly or whoever else is acting, that we need to be frosty to be able to pop gears and make sure that the department heads are going to get the support. That's my only concern. You know, I want a smooth transition that the common man ain't noticing nothing. That's it.
Then we can move on to the park board project recommendations that were in your packet.
Nice question, starting out. I reviewed the memo, and it stated there was a email from a company, Disc Essentials, but that wasn't in my packet. I've I've been through it a couple of times. I didn't go back and pull Ramona's original email. Did you guys have it in your packet? No, it's a separate email.
There there was a page.
And then it probably would have been the very last page in the packet.
Was it able to accompany it?
Disc Essentials. I don't remember. I don't know. I don't know either. So I don't know for sure what that was about.
The disc golf?
Is it from Disc Essentials? Yeah.
But that was all that was in.
All right. You guys want to see this, get a copy of it, or have?
It was in the packet.
Essential is this.
Your packet?
Essential this.
Yeah, on the top of the letter, it says
Yeah. Yeah.
That was not in my packet.
Oh, yeah, that was in mine.
Yeah. But I don't think there was anything attached with that, just that.
Okay. So just to catch us up to speeds, the park board got together at our request and said what?
That was recommended to do the nine-hole disc golf and then to do the 18-hole disc golf later and the pump track. But we didn't put dollar on site at the time.
But it was your recommendation, as well as approved by the park board, that it would be a two-thirds split of year-one proceeds to the pump track and one-third split to the disc golf programs.
It was a correct, although I don't think that was officially
Oh, that was.
In it. That's what I want.
So, so, I'm sorry, go ahead, Josh. Sorry. I do remember her saying that, but I think Rodney had recommended not putting a
A dollar.
Yeah. Yeah. I do remember that.
Yeah. I didn't think there was dollar on it, but I do think that there was two-thirds and one-third.
So going back to things, let's talk about these projects. Obviously, these projects are going to be city projects, and we're talking about the pump track. We have a nonprofit entity kind of spearheading doing this. It's still a city project, right? But this nonprofit can come in and contribute. Help me clarify on this.
It's not a nonprofit, it's just a committee.
Okay, this committee can come in, just like the Dog Park Committee, correct? And keep adding to the pot. We're saying we're going to commit to getting this project done, we're going to commit some funds to this project. These other folks are out there to help raise donations, just like we did with the Dog Park, to get us to where we
Similar.
Similar to that kind of operation. Cool. Do we want to allocate at this level, the say one-third, two-thirds, like the two of you were discussing, or?
Are you going to allocate based on just this year's?
Yes.
I do understand that.
This year or last year's?
Last year.
The last is, the 3/38.
Maybe next year's.
We don't have an official notification of what this year's funds are going to be, but I understand it's going to be a little bit, probably will be a little bit more than the 3/38. But who else? Mr. Patterson.
Yeah, Mike. I'd like to see us at least get one thing done. So rather than allocating so much here, so much to this project, I'd like to see us complete the nine-hole force cramping and allocate the rest of the funds towards the pump track at this time. Get one done. And then we'll have, hopefully, more funds coming in. We can look at future funds.
Question. So the nine-hole, you mentioned cramping, is that, is that what we're thinking? Put the nine-hole?
That's what we discussed.
But that decision is final just yet. Is cramping big?
Right to the mouth.
Okay. Well, the arguments I heard, you recommend the cramp and want it's downtown. People are here.
Yeah.
It's usable.
Yeah.
It's already maintained. That's it. So it'd be a minimum cost, it's right in the center of town.
It'll be novice, a novice kind of thing for
Yeah, this would be a beginner's, a beginner's course.
Yeah.
Yeah, Mike.
Mr. Swaney? Um, park board recommended that we build the 18-hole and the nine-hole. That was the presentation they were given. I don't think that, we don't even know the exact amount until we have Roe reengineer it. We have to allocate some money for the development of it, and there is a little work to be done. And it can definitely go in this spring. That's an easy thing to do, to get it moving. We have to get it moving and get the RFPs moving the things for that particular project. But I think the two-thirds and one-third, because it's something we want to do this year. This is not, we have waited around for a whole year already, want to get it going, want to get it in the ground. We've been talking about it, talking about it, talking about it. We asked the park board, they gave us the recommendation, and I think that we should definitely follow that. Now, over a little over $100,000 seems like an awful lot of money for disc golf, especially on property that we already own. We don't have to do all those things. But that leaves plenty of money for us to perhaps provide residents with discs. We can get our fancy new logo stamped right on them, and anybody who wants discs that's a resident in the city of here, we can give us that too. There are companies, two companies within 30 miles of here that are more than willing to help us out with that, and it won't cost as much money. But there's, I don't think we should just say, yep, they can do the nine holes and the rest goes to the pump track. The beginning until we get hard numbers, to get hard, to get to the hard numbers is not, we have to enter a $10,000 contract just for the the design contract with the company that does, that builds and designs them. There's only one in the country really that does that does this, in the world really, that does this. So it's not even an RFP situation because there's only one that that does those things. But that's $10,000. There is a little bit of actual engineering to reengineer. The site they chose was the site just north of Chatfield. It's in about four acres between Chatfield and Genesee. It's part of the prairies and ponds, but it's about four acres, and it would fit nicely there. There is, like I said, there is some engineering that needs to be done, of course. But we had asked them to do that. They, when they came back with us, they said, no, these aren't hard numbers because we don't know where you're going to put it, we don't know what you're going to do. If we allocate that property for that, and then we instruct Roe to finish that engineering with the things that Velo Solutions needs to do their design plan, we can do that all in one fell swoop with one motion.
And just for clarification, the 18-hole, for us to put the 18-hole in would also require us to acquire some additional property for the 18-hole? Yeah, I thought so. That's not a sign. Yeah.
So the way that it is now, where the pavilion is next to the river, where the bowl is off to Mill, Chatfield, or Chatfield, the city does own more than just that to the end of that. There's some other stuff around there that used to be, that's part of the Oakdale property. And there's enough room there to put it. And then we don't have to acquire more property to put those in. It would be nice to be able to acquire more property, to expand it and put a bridge across the river and things like that. That would be great. But for it to work, we don't have to right now.
We need a motion. Go ahead, Mr. Patterson.
Okay. I make a motion that we approve allocating marijuana funds to the completion of a nine-hole golf course, disc golf course, and allocate the rest of the funds towards the pump track of current funds. And leaving any funds we get open to discussion for further development of disc golf courses and pump track.
Support.
Yeah. Just me, like being the legislative part of the local government, could I ask the administrative branch to maybe clarify if this is the appropriate
Motion.
Motion or or step, so we're not, you know, we're not crossing over from legislative to administrative, or whatever. If that makes sense.
Yeah.
Well, I, one of the questions I had for you under discussion was the little bit of breakdown I've heard about the pump track was a organization, Peter and a few, Peter McCready and a few others are involved in. They discussed it as something they were going to do similar to the pocket park where they raised the funds. Is that correct? Or is this going to be a city project? The pump track?
The pump track is going to be in partnership, hopefully, with many various organizations, including the state. Similar to several of the other projects that we've done in the past, like the prairies and prairies and ponds. The dog park is a little different.
It has to be a city project.
But it's worth.
It has, yeah, it has to start with the city in order to apply for certain funding.
So in the, as an example, in the Dog Park case, we have the land that we allow the group to generate the revenue, execute the plan. This case, we again, in the pump track, that's a pretty valuable chunk of land, one that's, you know, been planned for. So if we were partnered, then that land would be our attachment. You're not committing now to that land, because that wasn't part of the move yet. So, I think that, that move is fine. The other administrative question is, we've talked about this a few times, the year that revenue, marijuana revenue came in last year was 338,000 roughly. It had been budgeted at 100 or 110,000, so there was a difference of 228,000, let's say. So when we discuss dedicating the marijuana money, it's a, Commissioner Kattin mentioned 338, but the actual unbudgeted portion of that at the time was 228, I believe. Am I pretty close on those numbers, Kelly?
I think it's more like 170, but you get the, the point is, the entire portion or the amount that was funded.
So, that, when you mentioned that, you said marijuana money from the, that year would be the smaller amount of money, that's the way I understood it, that was not budgeted, not the 338. So, I would need clarification on that.
All of it.
Yeah.
I have a question on what happened to the other 100,000. Now, I know we did allocate a certain money, money for Row to give us.
No, that's separate. So the year of the budget, we do a budget, our anticipated revenue for that year was 110,000, something like that, that's the money I'm talking about. We received 338, so there was a unbudgeted balance of 228. I'm, I'm just using the numbers I use right there. Well, the 100, the initial revenue was budgeted for, and went into the general fund as any other revenue item, but we certainly track that, we know.
No, I'm, I'm good, I'm, I'm with you. I feel like we had this conversation 10 months ago.
I'd like to do right now, withdraw my motion. Draw your support.
Absolutely, sir.
Okay, and then I'd like to make a motion. That the city construct a nine-hole disc golf course, and continue to work with all local agencies on building the pump track.
This will be based on the proposal we have that the Park Board approved.
Yes.
But the Park Board...
Is there a support? There's a motion, was there a support? I'm not supporting.
Okay.
I've been supportive of the safety association.
Motion, motion was favored. Using your baskets, using your glasses, Joel.
I comment, I saw a light bulb go off on, above Commissioner Swindell's head.
Okay, well, first I'm gonna go, okay, I'm first gonna go to Commissioner Joel, who had his hand out, because the motion...
The recommendation of the Park Board was to do the nine-hole and the 18-hole and the pump track. It was for all three. And so the motion that you are making is not the recommendation of the Park Board.
Okay. I will withdraw my motion.
And you, you're supported.
Commissioner Swindell, I would like to make a motion to allocate two-thirds of the 2021 marijuana excise tax money to the development of a pump track, designate the four acres north of Chatfield that is part of Prairies and Ponds for the project, have Row do their, another cost analysis with input from the committee and the city to include one foot topographical utilities and geographical information, and enter a design contract with Velo Solutions. Whether or not we have to do an RFP is okay, for $10,000, and start the fundraising.
I will support.
Motion, Commissioner Swindell, supported by Commissioner Kattin. These are discussion, Commissioner Patsy.
What about this call?
There's another motion for the other third, right under it, I promise.
You want to pick it up here?
Got it.
Okay, one thing at a time?
Yeah.
This one.
Okay.
Motion's been made, there's further discussion. Commissioner Patsy.
We do have to do a RFP, right? So we can't just give the, if we do, we do.
Yeah, if there's only one...
The motion was to approve the contract with, what was it again?
Velo Solutions.
I was thinking...
Madam Mayor, so I don't, maybe Dale could answer this for us, but when there's only one contractor that does that, then you don't have to per se put out an RFP welcoming that, because there's only one contractor for exactly what we want. And there's only one contractor really that's capable of doing what they're aiming for. And they're, they're on the single, single though.
Single source.
Yes, they're...
And that, that is correct, if you, if they're an expert in the field, you can select them directly. Vela, Vela Woods?
Velo Solutions.
Solutions, are they the people that presented at the meeting, or the...
No.
It was in your package, the B E L solution was roughly...
Oh, that's right, I'm confusing disc golf, I'm sorry. All right, I understand that.
Just wanna clarify that as the, as we are having this discussion, we are discussing the 338,000 dollar figure. So in essence, finance, we are asking finance then to pull that money back from the general fund, but that they caught, of my correct?
Can we give a numerical amount, or does this works?
Just being nerdy, I guess.
Commissioner Patsy.
Yeah, my only concern is, are we going to leave enough funds if we dedicate to this? We should.
Yes.
Yes.
I'm optimistic about the presentation that was presented.
That's where, that's how we came up with that, those figures, actually.
My concern.
Yeah, Bill, great questions.
Rodney, go ahead, please.
A question about the pump track, that money that, the two-thirds that we're allocating, does that include the $10,000 for the design, but there's other work that needs to be done in order to hit up a whole together on the property, maybe some surveying work, things like that.
That was part of the motion, even. I'm listening.
Sorry.
That's okay.
I just know that, that this will just give premise for the committee to then start, say, hey, this, it shows with a vision where it's gonna be, this is what we're doing. So, so then, you know, we can help raise funds, that, that's, it just gives, it gives the city in this project direction.
It helps start the ball rolling for them to, for that group that is working on the pump track to this.
And that, that's...
That's what they need. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion's carried.
Madam Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to allocate one-third of the 2021 marijuana excise tax for the development of nine-hole disc golf course at Crampton Park and 18 holes at the trails at Oakdale. And the same to have Row do the updated cost analysis, and this, I'm not sure about the RFP thing. And either put out the RFP process to receive bids for both the building and bids for the, to provide discs to residents who would like them.
It's a word.
Which is the may, by Commissioner Swindell, supported by Commissioner Kattin.
Again, I'm not, I'm not beating Debbie Downer, I just, I'm trying to... I'm, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I'm in trouble now.
Never mind.
I just wanna make sure the city's, you know, covered and protected. As far as buying people disc golf, how does that, does that count as like swag? Like where does that fit in, like financially, this might be a question to people with suggestions.
It could actually fall into the marketing and PR and aim for the launch of said park. I mean, it could go into the marketing department, which would be allocated X amount, X number of dollars into a marketing budget with a earmark towards, maybe recall this by... But then we would, we would price it a little bit, yeah, it's worth it.
I also, wasn't that touched a little bit during their presentation, that the company, a couple of the companies might be able to provide some of those discs? And we have a company, Peter, I believe, that makes sense.
There was one in Marla, Marla.
They've already said they would donate the baskets, you know, the manufacturer of the baskets.
Oh, the basket, okay.
So we have verbal commitments?
Yeah.
So, but, I think, you know, this, I think, for you.
Is, how would that, how would that work exactly with the disc golf, giving away the...
Well, I don't know on forms of donating piece of equipment, because, I mean, if you think of public use money, you can give it to every single resident. I might toss this down to Rodney, just thinking, would you, tennis rackets, tennis balls? I mean, if somebody wanted to go use the tennis courts, do they have to bring their own? There's nothing at Parson Rec that someone could borrow, there's no longer...
And we will stop out of the rest of the, I'll, I'll, I'll... Might, might don't work out, but like, and bring over, um, check out, we'll do this in three days.
I think that's what they were kinda talking about, really.
So that cost isn't a factor, it's not prohibiting anyone. I love the pump track, I will never use it, let me promise you, I will never be on C W. However, I think it's a great idea, and it gives kids something to do. Not all kids have a bike. And the bikes that they use on those trails out there, if you have a used bike or a low cost, you got it at one of the places in town bikes, that trail will chew your bike up and spit it out for breakfast. And it won't be very long until that happens. Not everyone can afford a bike. My family, the bikes in my garage cost more than my side-by-side. And it's cost prohibitive, prohibitive to some people. One of the things that I, my goal was, as a commissioner with this marijuana money, was to make something the entire community can enjoy. I don't care if you're two or 102, if you wanna play disc golf, I don't want anyone to come and say, I can't because I can't afford it. So if, we have at the grand opening and we have them available, or maybe we need to, you know, make something on the website that if you are a resident and you wanna set, cool, click here, and we will have them for you at the grand opening, because how do you know how many numbers? Or maybe it's the first this many people or whatever. I just don't want, I don't wanna make something for the community that not everyone can do because they can't afford it.
Yeah, I'm not coming, I'm not coming against you at all, I'm just, I'm just making sure, like if I'm gonna approve something, I wanna make sure I'm not gonna get in trouble.
It will work out.
That, that's what my question is. Just clear.
Just to clarify, at a meeting that we had, the presentation that we had, they kinda laid out the nine-hole course at Crampton and the 18-hole course at Oakdale property. I'm not for sure on the property lines, but according to this diagram here, only maybe half of the city owns, another third of it maybe is a different property owner, and I think some of it might be Coles and Home Depot property. But I can, Dale, I can try to explain this to you better than me, you wanna look at this one way?
I was under the impression that there was more than one or two sites that might be possible.
Based upon different configuration, I thought that that was my understanding as well, but there also was discussion with regards to acquiring additional property if necessary. And I remember, that is part of the, the conversation, but I think what we're trying to do is establish that these are the plans for the 18-hole, and this is the area, and now we need to figure out how to estimate that to work within the property in the area.
That we have, that if we need to purchase property, we can have a location order.
It was also my understanding, and maybe in a moment with the motion, that the nine-hole would be completed.
This year.
This year.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion's carried. No discussion. You don't have the report?
Nope.
Yes, do you have the attorney's report, where else? How are you tonight? You haven't heard a thing from me there?
Um, I'm working on a couple of patent litigation matters, and hopefully it will go up. This, other than various things recently, so, that's it.
There are no recommendations tonight for any appointments to board your commissions. In your package was all the departmental communications and the Dog Park Development Report, the DDA monthly report. So that brings us to public comments.
I wanna thank Josh for an attempt on discussion for Friday night, Friday night. I'm a resident, my mom lives right behind the city, Genesee. And I'm thinking about families on Friday night, that is a paycheck night, where people wanna bring their families downtown. It is not, I'm not, my husband writes, like, he comes out, okay, he comes out late, but I'm not opposed to that at all. I am opposed to every single Friday night, the town is closed, to little kids. It's not conducive to bring little kids down there. I brought my nephew and my niece, who are of age, to drink, and they didn't feel terrifically comfortable. And we were at wood chips, but they're like, some of the language and everything, and I just think we have to think about families with little kids. Patrick was trying to, I mean, he wanted it stalled for two weeks for another meeting. And that's not, the way it was taken care of tonight wasn't flexible. You, you weren't thinking of every business down at the city, or residents of the city. You just wanted to go forward, and unfortunately haste makes waste, this commission, there's been some hasty things done, and it's caused some waste. And my tax dollars, I, I care about how they've been spent. So, I'm just so disappointed that that's how it was handled, with Josh just saying, hey, can we curve it for one meeting, I mean, it's two weeks ago. To give people some time to just talk about it, think about it, maybe have it on not every single Friday night, maybe every other Friday night, one Friday a month, something, because it isn't one that you're gonna take your kids through the town or to dinner, because it starts early. So even if you wanna get in there early for dinner, you can. And, and the few retail shops, I don't see that bringing business to them. It stays right in the bar restaurant area. So I, I'm so disappointed that you guys, as a, as a body, would just shut him down if there was like no respect there, it was like, right away, no, we're not doing that, and he just asked for a two-week delay. So, man, you guys pull back. So man, you guys pull back, pull back. Do you have other public comments? That's it. State your name and.
It's Matt Keyway. Let me see, K E Y. I live above, uh, here. Uh, I'll just, that's what Melissa said. I didn't realize the, it sounds like it's too late now for the bike night thing. I didn't realize it was going to be, uh, discussed today since I got here. I wasn't too sure about this specific, so it's kind of too late now, but I'll get my thoughts out in front of my, my wife who has a baby daughter. And we're newer to the city, came out over here a little now. And every Friday for bike night, we, we usually walk around. And as bike nights, it was like, yeah, we're not going to go that far into the city because it gets very loud, motorcycles are loud. It's not super pleasant, so we would kind of, we would leave on those days. So it's kind of going into what has been talked about here about it's not super pleasant for everybody, I think. So that's my own take on it is something about it is it being every Friday. Well, long story short, you already voted on it. So I would just agree that it did seem like, um, this was being voted on a bit too hastily. Almost with a bit of emotion as opposed to maybe taking a little bit to gather together the other side to this. Maybe Patrick could have shown up and there could have been a larger kind of presence to argue it over. Um, I guess I'm just saying that's what I would have liked to see instead of how this went. And, and I think, you know, it being funded by city taxes also makes me think that should maybe have gone a little bit more slowly. So I'm just giving my, I know it's too late now, but that's my, uh, my comment on it.
Thank you. Any other comments? That brings us to closing comments, Daryl. I will start with, for sure, that one.
I'd just like to thank, uh, everybody for coming out tonight. Also, I wanted to thank, uh, Daryl for his service to the city. That, that gentleman has been through the wringer and back. With his position, I know it's not always a favorable job or position. You know, when you show up and you have to tell people no or get a permit or, or whatever. He's had to deal with a lot of flack in that department. And he persevered through a lot, uh, but ultimately, uh, this, this gentleman cared for the number one priority is safety of our citizens. We have a lot of rent, rental properties, uh, apartments. And sometimes, um, landlords would maybe miss something, a furnace, a safety issue. And I've, I've had people contact me with safety issues and immediately forwarded to Dale. Daryl would be right over there. Trying to get on top of things, getting in touch with owners, property owners and, and, um, so he, he has a, a good working relationship with the community. And so I just want to thank him for all of his work. And we need to, you know, find a really good replacement for him again. Number one concern is safety, public safety. And a lot of times it costs us business owners extra funds to provide that safety. But at the end of the day, it's about lives. If there's an emergency situation, um, we want to save life. And, uh, so I want to thank Daryl for his, um, time with the city. And I believe that, I, I mean, I'm excited for the disc golf course. I tried it one time. It's kind of irritating like regular golf. Uh, but I think I emailed, um, I was looking back some, man, this is where I asked. And, and I emailed Ray, I think back in two thousand sixteen, just his thoughts on like, uh, disc golf course. And I don't think he really didn't go anywhere, so. I think it's, uh, again, I'm all for ecotourism and that is one, another feather in our hat. If we do it the appropriate way. And, uh, I'm sure everything will be professionally designed, again, safety in mind. And also the pump track, I am, I'm on the committee with Commissioners Swindell as well. And it's, it's a, uh, it's something that's near and dear to my heart because it, it gives not only older people who like to do crazy things and possibly hurt themselves, but it also, um, gives young adults, teenagers an opportunity to get out there and have, um, fun and do some crazy stuff. But it also, uh, children as well can get out there and use parts of these pump tracks. It's designed to, to have a, a large majority of, uh, skaters, skateboarders, bikes, mountain bikes, old, young. And it's, it's a pretty interesting concept. And when you think pump track or you're like, what the heck is a pump track? It's way different than a skate park is. It's designed so you don't have to pedal. And you, you pump it like, like you're going downhill and you pump and you gain speed. I might not use it. I might, I might drive it. So I'm just excited, um, for that as well. And I'm, I'm glad.
Not for being dumb, just thank you for the comments.
All I get. That was a payback for the Debbie Downer. That's what that was.
Give it to me, Stowe.
Hi. Um, also I would like to thank Daryl for all of his time and energy put into the, the position. And that's a thankless one. Um, it's telling people no, uh, the most creatively and politely possible or how to do something. Um, and so we appreciate all of his work there. Um, as for the handling of the bike night, I guess I didn't, uh, see the reason that the process was handled by one of the business owners and that also the city had prior beta commitment to this event for, in a multiple year sort of agreement. If you think that it doesn't affect me personally, you're wrong. As the artistic director and executive director of Stone, Stone Theater, we are also limited where we cannot produce a show on Friday nights due to the volume of the motorcycles. However, this is an event that actually brings two hundred to four hundred people on an annual, on a weekly basis, um, on one night a week, that we are looking at how we can alter our business formula for Stone, Stone Theater, which is to produce on Saturday, Sunday as opposed to Friday, Saturday. There are ways of working around the situation. There are ways of working with the situation. Some of you might remember in our year one, we actually had a national, a nationally recognized motorcycle artist that came in and we were, that was the gallery that was on display. The businesses in the community that are concerned about not having business, they need to start thinking creatively. They need to start thinking of how they can capture some of that two hundred to four hundred people to get to their business. But what has happened over the course of a couple of years, well, even before that, they, they close at five o'clock and they don't bother or don't want to open. So I, I'm, I'm concerned that there are hurt feelings, of course. Um, I'm not apologetic to the process that was happened because the owner and the coordinator of the event handled it in the appropriate way and timely. We had also approached Patrick prior to this, before any papers were submitted to the city for an event, a proposal or a plea call, that if he had a solution to please come forward. This was months ago. I have no idea. I have, I have nothing. Okay. Well, in the eleventh hour, he comes up, I'm sorry, I just, we have to continue. Uh, and I really do think that this is a benefit to our city. We are bringing people into this community from roughly five counties that are coming to our city. And they return and they buy furniture and they buy dinners and they buy drinks and they buy possibly a car or get their bike fixed or serviced. This is commerce. This is traffic, but I don't want you to think that I think about these things just willy nilly or that it's a personal thing. No, there's an impact to, to the business and operation that I run. Now, if you want to go one step further and talk about family friendly productions and, and entertainment, let's talk to the Center for the Arts about opening during the summer months when they are shuttered. There is a facility that the city and DDA own. And we have been asking them to open for weekends or open for movies or open for programming in the summer. Now's the time. If you want family friendly entertainment and culture and, and programming, which I think we all do, then now is the time to not only just approach the city and say how badly we're handling things, but let's think creatively and have that communication. And let's talk with the Center for the Arts about why they aren't open in the summer and why can't we have summer programming? The restaurants have fully said that when the PICS has an event, they are full. So why aren't they open? I'm done.
Commissioner Swindell?
I'm so excited. We finally got marijuana money and we finally got to spend it. And I have been so excited about this for so long. I have been coming to these meetings long before I was commissioner, like a dozen years, educating the commission, educating the community, educating the city staff about why this would be good to bring this here. And now I finally got to see it come full circle and I probably won't quit smiling for two weeks. I, bike night, I did not see a whole bunch of people making a whole bunch of comments tonight. I saw one business owner that submitted an email comment. I didn't see all the other businesses making comments. I don't see them here and they didn't submit emails. If we didn't do something because one person in the city that owns a business or resides here either way, said, I don't think that's a good idea, we would never do anything ever. And we didn't have that here tonight. We didn't have the support to not do it. We just didn't. People do visit bike night with their families. I can count on probably one hand, how many bike nights I missed in both years. And it's very similar to the car cruise on Monday. People come downtown with their whole family. There's babies in strollers. They're bringing their puppies, the kids, they're looking at the bikes, they're getting ice cream, they're getting something to eat. I don't feel it's not a family friendly environment. There may be perhaps that demographic of people swears more, probably not more than me. However, you can't drive the school buses, there, we have a lot of school buses in this district. Half of them drive by a few different houses on their bus route every day with big flags that have the F-bomb Biden on their front porch hanging very proudly. We can't shelter our kids from everything. We can't. It's there. We're, we're not changing the bus route to go around that house or those houses because there's more than one in the city up here that has that. We can't change the whole way we do everything, you know? You know, so we don't rubber stamp anything around here. And it really irritates me when people say that we do and that we slide things into the consent agenda. Events are always in the consent agenda. That's the way it's always been since I've been paying attention to meetings and that's where it goes. They do their paperwork, they submit an application and it goes wherever to whoever staff member needs to, um, take care of that. And then it comes to us with a staff recommendation plus their original, um, application. This isn't something like our agenda is, here's your agenda. It's two pages long. Ours is often hundreds of pages long. We get all the information that supports to go with everything. We don't rubber stamp and we don't sneak things into anything. And I think that's disgusting for anyone to say that because we work really hard. That's it.
Commissioner Katink?
Hi. Um, congratulations to Daryl on his retirement. Thank him like everybody else for all of his many years of service. I am, um, elated that, uh, you know, when I, this, the discussion of what to do with the marijuana money started almost eight years ago. It was because this community went through some heartache and some pain over that topic for that money to show up. There's finally a positive that comes to the community because of this back and forth, this debate, this, this political fight that has been happening in the city for three plus years, four, five, well, it's been twelve. Been going on a long time. And now we have something good to show for it. And not only do we, and, and money's money. We're going to have a physical thing. And that's really been my hope that we get to the point to say, hey, there's going to be a physical thing that we all can point to and say, hey, we went through this, we went through the trenches, you know? Friends maybe became enemies over this vote, et cetera, et cetera. Hopefully they kiss, make up and have a burger. But hey, at least we got a silver lining out of saying this is here because of this. And I'm so happy about that. The first time I went to bike night year one was a magical thing because it brought me back to memories of my childhood, growing up here. Downtown was everything. Twenty-four didn't matter to this community. Downtown was everything. Every day downtown was full because there was nothing on twenty-four, you know? And that's what I saw in that first evening, still daylight. I see our chief of police, Chief Fresh, and I'm like, I'm smiling ear to ear and he's smiling ear to ear because he can see it too. And I see Commissioner Stowe and he's smiling ear to ear. And I see the public at large and they're smiling ear to ear. Why? Because look at the massive humanity here just to enjoy our community. And it's a beautiful thing. It is family friendly, just like the car show. When the sun is up, families are there with puppies and baby strollers, young families, pre-teens, teens, look with dad, you know, looking at the motorcycles, et cetera, et cetera. And as the sun sets low, the kids go home and the adults stick around a little bit, get, get a couple. There's been no problems with police, which is perfect. That's exactly what we want to see. And every, well, I'll just look at it this way. I think the biker community has looked at us and said, boy, we really like this town. It's leaving a, a lasting effect on them that they come back here, not just on Fridays. And I have a feeling that this year there's going to be even more people. But the thing is wrong. And like Mr. Commissioner Stowe said, this is a, this is an opportunity. Some businesses are against this event. What can I do with my business to capitalize on two to four hundred people being on my block on a Friday night? What can I do? If I am in business for myself, my job is to promote my business. If there's two hundred people outside my front door, how am I promoting my business to those people? And that's a question for every business owner to answer for themselves. Again, super excited for the process.
I would like to express my appreciation for Mr. Alver. In the three years I've worked with the city with them, I found him to be incredibly competent and professional. He was a real credit to the city. And I hope the city is currently looking as hard as they can to replace him. Hopefully they can find someone at that level. That would be fantastic. I appreciate your comments on bike night. Not everything is for everyone. But we do have a city process and the applicant had an application. I don't think it's fair to them because they have planning time, et cetera, to gear it up, to withhold it for two weeks because someone might have a different idea. If you want to submit an application for a special event in the city, get it in. File it. We will listen to it.
Do you have anything for us?
I just wanted to comment, uh, on some comments.
I just wanted to comment on some comments that were, something that was in the paper, a Ms. Bowman, uh, she's been working with the city to locate her business and the quote was from her, the city has been fantastic to work with, the planning office has helped identify potential locations. Great to work with, that's the same thing we heard with, from Blaine's when their owner was here and from LaPierre Villas. Um, I, part of that credit goes to the planning department but also to Darrell and the other department heads. Darrell has made a very significant impact on the community and I would thank him for his service too.
Well, I too, of course, want to thank Darrell for his service, eight years. Seems hard to believe that eight years have flown by. I wish that he could have been here tonight. I hope that we have the opportunity to, or that I at least would have the opportunity to shake his hand and thank him personally for his service. I don't know when his future plans are, but whatever that is, I wish him the best in his future endeavors and I'm sure that there's something out there that he's really going to enjoy. Maybe it's not work, maybe it'll be just, maybe fun. Anyway, thank you, Darrell. Um, also, I'm excited about our future projects for the pump track and disc golf. Building our enhancements and our parks is a great thing for our community. I can't help thinking that perhaps I probably may not ride on that pump track either, but I do remember in the video seeing this one year old little girl on that bike. By gosh, if they can do it, why can't we? I just might have to wear something on my head and knees and elbows and everything else. But it does look exciting and I, I, I think it's going to be a great addition to our park system, especially for our families. So looking forward to all that. Finally that was out of its way. I too want to say that bike night or any events or anything within our packets is not taken away. We spent several hours going over everything and where some choices that are made may not make everybody happy, we do the best that we can up here. And uh, it's, there are times where not everybody's going to agree or like it. Now, right now for bike night, it sounds like there might not be some music and that was some of the questions and some of the people, but whether that happens or not, I don't know. But it'll help the businesses in some cases and others it may not, but maybe they'll change their business plan, so. I think we have a great community, we have a lot to look forward to and we can make a break on communities. So let's work together and make everything out of positive as much as possible. And I look forward to our next meetings and workshops.
Motion, Dr. Gert.
Thank you.
Okay. Motion, Dr. Gert.
I saw the sparkle in your eye.
Thank you.